January ninth and January twenty first. Investment report of December thirty first, two thousand and twenty four. Financial reports for the quarter ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty four. And the Tetra-Tac Agreement. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda?
I made a motion to accept the consent agenda. Someone second.
Motion on the floor to accept the consent agenda as presented by Councilman Flynn, seconded by Councilman Morrissey. Any further discussions? Yes, Councilman Soha.
Just wanted to apologize for the October twenty ninth. Minutes being so late, it was an oversight and an attachment.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. Any other comments or questions on the agenda? Consent agenda. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes out of it. We'll move on to communications and petitions. Commissioner Ingles, do you have anything for us today?
Um, sure.
Thank you.
You're moving pretty quick for me tonight. I actually was cleaning my notes up as we speak. Couple of things. We did receive our final report on the completion of the courthouse. On the exterior, the main project has been scaffolding in the last couple of years anyway. That project, we had Brian Rocky from Historic Renaissance in attendance at our last meeting. He gave us the final, you know, comments that he had. In fact, the exterior of the project was ten point five million dollars. And that was under the budget of ten point eight. So we're pretty pleased with how that went. They will have provided an annual inspection for the next five years. And then we'll create a maintenance contract after that. We did have the Materials Management Planning Committee, initial meeting last Thursday. Representatives from Hills Hill, Mr. Blake was there, Jonesville, Ichfield, CPO Township, Ransome Township, and Hillsdale County, also LRS. So we'll be moving forward and developing a plan. I think we have an excellent committee and good discussion for the hour and a half we were there. And we will have our next meeting on February twenty seventh. So that pretty much completes what I have for you today. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any introduction and adoption of ordinances or public hearings. We'll move on to old business. Airport hangar rents. Everyone have a chance to think about this a little bit longer, talk to people. Do we have any outstanding question? Excuse me. Do we have any outstanding questions or comments? Okay. Ginger Mackey, something add?
Uh, no, I just wanted to say that Ginger is not here because she is not feeling well.
So.
Otherwise she would be here.
Okay, thank you. No problem. Prayers for Ginger. Councilman Bruns.
I'm fairly confident that we could get two hundred a month. And I think we should go for that.
Okay. Councilman Bentley.
I agree.
Okay, Councilman Flynn?
I did have an opportunity to talk with Ginger today because I had some questions. And I asked her about this. She tells me that anything over a hundred and fifty a month pilots and owners and companies get real jittery. At an airport our size. And she said that she really thinks, at least to start, if we just leave it at a hundred and fifty, it will keep everybody that we have. And then we can maybe this time next year look at bumping it up a little incrementally like we talked at the last meeting. And I would defer to her expertise in this matter. And I would believe if she thinks a hundred and fifty is going to be the best for the hangers, I would vote for a hundred and fifty.
Thank you, Councilman Flynn. Councilman Soha.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I would agree with Councilman Flynn. I think we should start at the one fifty, see how the increase goes and then move forward. From there, we can always readjust it. Easier to increase than to come back down, I think.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. Councilman Bentley?
It is easier to decrease it than to increase it. We are having trouble increasing it right now. Two hundred is perfectly reasonable. Does Ginger think we'll lose one tenant, two tenants? Or do people not like the rent raised?
Yes, Mr. Mackey. Thank you, Councilman Bentley.
I don't know the answer to this specific question, but I would say that the amount was taken to the Airport Advisory Committee. And that is not just pilots or folks who rent there. It's actually business people as well that are not pilots. And they agreed unanimously that they thought a hundred and fifty was the appropriate amount to start. And that they thought that increasing it on an annual basis would be better than going too high. I'm just telling you what their feelings were.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Councilman Bentley?
We're starting to turn the prices. The market determines prices. So let's find out what the market is. Two hundred dollars.
Thank you, Councilman Bentley. Councilman Bruns?
I'd at least like to vote on two hundred. I think it's our job to try to get the best deal we can with the people of Hillsdale. So we should try it. So I at least motion to go for it with a two hundred dollar per month hanger rental price.
And that is, let's make the motion for the actual option in the packet. Is that one?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion from Councilman Bruns for option number one.
Let's take it.
And I have a second. Mr. Mackey?
Does that include the larger hanger as well? In option one, there's the T-hangers and then the larger hanger?
Let me take a quick look.
Oh, the options were taken out of this packet, but yes, it would be option one.
So your motion would have covered all of that.
I believe it was nine hundred for option.
Yes.
Eight hundred is option two.
Yes, the full option one, so two hundred and nine hundred.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor for option number one. Two hundred dollars for T-hangers, nine hundred dollars for the corporate hanger, and a second from Councilman Bentley. The only thing I'll say before we vote on this is that we've been raising prices across the board. Dial ride, oh my goodness, those riders have been hit hard. That it's, a lot of it is the fault of the state just constantly taking away our funding. Sandy Beach fees, dock fees, parade fees, and all of the DPS fees across the board, the right-of-way fees. Anytime you file anything with the city, we can raise the cost of infractions. All of these things have been doubled in the case of the dock fees in particular, more than doubled in just two years. So I think we should take that into account, that we are hitting our average citizens fairly hard across the board. And that is due to basically two things. A very high inflation environment the past four years. And a failure to raise these rates in some cases over decades, which has put other critical parts of the general fund under stress, particularly our infrastructure fund. Any further discussion on this topic? Councilman Wolfram?
Well, if one of the hangers doesn't rent because it's a two hundred dollars, but it would rent it at a hundred and fifty, you're going to lose essentially four months of the, the two hundred is now cost you four months of the one fifty. So I would, I would think that we would start at the lower number, see how that works. And then if there seems to be excess demand, then we can come back and raise it rather than having lost the one, you know, the two hundred dollars for that one month. And I don't know how many hangers there are, but to add, you know how many?
I believe sixteen, eighteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Okay. So anyway, that would be my suggestion is to stick with the one fifty until there's excess demand, then we can raise it.
Also a reminder, this won't go into effect on the first hangers until June, I believe, at the earliest was Steve's recommendation. So we do still have six months to let the renters know about this increase. Yes, Councilman Bruns?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just, I think that they'll be willing to pay it. And I'm happy to take the blame and, you know, talk about lowering prices if not so.
Thank you, Councilman Flynn.
Again, I'm going to defer to the expertise that is Ginger for the one fifty. But I would still like to, somewhere down the road sooner rather than later, as I go back to the last meeting, look at a tiered system where if you're going to rent a hanger for a month or two, charge them the top rate. Going to charge, if you're going to rent a hanger, say for six months, charge them a middle rate. If you're going to sign something for a whole year, then charge them the lower rate. I just think that, you know, if a hundred and fifty is good for twelve months, then if you're only going to use it for a month or two, then you should pay a little more than somebody who's going to be there all year. It just doesn't seem fair that you get the same rate as a year long or a decade long. So I would still like to vote yes on the one fifty. But I would also like the Airport Advisory Committee, maybe to look at some sort of a tiered structure down the road sooner rather than later, so that maybe we can balance that out.
Thank you, Councilman Flynn. Could we have Ginger prepare something stating, you know, the average occupancy of the T-hangers, how much turnover there is, something like that for us to look at?
I can tell you that answer now, and it's pretty much nonexistent.
Okay.
If we have, if we have an opening, it's taken up and then you should stay there until, till the end. So there is, there's probably very little time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Does this, if you were, mind me, does this option one, does it have the automatic increases?
Well, I don't believe we've written that into that. We weren't, I think we want to talk about when we approve the fee structure, pulling out every fee that we want to write that cost increase to it and put it in the fee, the whole fee schedule. Yes. That would be my preference, at least rather than going piecemeal, so it just applies to everything. And I think it would still come to council every year and said five percent inflation is what we want to impose, the five percent increase or something like that. Thank you. Mr. Mackey, anything to add on that? Councilman Bentley?
I'd like to agree with Councilman Flynn about the discriminatory pricing. But if they're there forever, then there's no turnover. Then how are we, how will we possibly think that people are going to leave if they come and stay indefinitely? But for future comparison, how much does it cost for the dock fees?
I believe it was two hundred in two thousand and twenty-two and four fifty, we approved the last budget year?
Yes.
With the fee schedule?
That's what I remember. Four hundred and fifty dollars.
A year, a year.
Oh, a year. Okay. But a boat versus an airplane.
And you don't.
End of season.
Yeah.
You know, so four hundred and fifty years.
Six months, seven months, something like that.
Anyway, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Bruns, seconded by Councilman Bentley. We are voting on option number one. Two hundred dollars for the T-hangers, nine hundred dollars for the corporate hanger. May I have a roll call vote? Katie?
Councilmember Bruns?
Yes.
Flynn?
No.
Morrissey?
No.
Soha?
No.
Stuccio?
No.
Wolfram?
No.
Mayor Proton Paladino?
Yes.
And Councilperson Bentley?
Yes.
Three yes, was it five no?
Three to five, the motion fails. Do I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we accept the rent charges as a hundred and fifty dollars for the T-hangers and eight hundred dollars for the corporate hangers.
A motion on the floor from Councilman Flynn, seconded by Councilman Soha. This is for option number two on the corporate and T-hanger rent increases. Katie, can I have a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Paladino?
Yes.
Councilperson Bentley?
No.
And Bruns?
No.
We've got six yes, two no guesses.
Thank you, Katie. We will move on to new business. Later. We have an Oprah for JB Office Building LLC. They received an Oprah at thirty and thirty-two North Howell Street last, and it began last, no, December thirty first, two thousand and twenty-two, going through December thirty of two thousand and thirty-two. Sam Frye is here to speak on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton and councilmembers. Just to add to what Mayor Proton Paladino said, you have before you today a request from JB Office Building LLC. They received an Oprah in two thousand and twenty-two to complete a project, a rehabilitation project at thirty and thirty-two North Howell Street in Michigan. This was a ten-year Oprah. In the original resolution, they were given two years to complete the project. It was scheduled to be completed by October first of two thousand and twenty-four. That project has not yet commenced, but when we were going through and updating our files here at the end of October, we did talk to the certificate holder. They informed us they still intend to complete that project, and so they requested additional time. So what we would be looking at here tonight is whether or not to grant that request for an additional two years for the project. We do have the certificate holder here. They can answer any specific questions you might have directed to them. If you do have any questions about the Oprah, the resolution, or any other technical questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Thank you, Sam. Councilman Soha, yes?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. So Sam, thank you. The ten years is still the same from two thousand and twenty-two, correct? Or just giving them extra time to complete?
That's right. So the length of the certificate would not change. It would still expire in two thousand and thirty-two. So it wouldn't be receiving additional years of that tax benefit. It would just be getting basically an additional two years to actually complete the project, provide us with a notice that it's completed and final cost, so we can close out that file.
Thank you. You have in front of you, I asked Kim to provide the total taxes abated on this property from December thirty first, two thousand and twenty-two to the present. The two thousand and twenty-five is an estimate because taxes haven't been assessed yet fully for twenty-five. And the total of paid taxes, about thirty-eight hundred. Total city taxes abated about sixteen hundred dollars. So that is what the sheet is here. Councilman Wolfram?
I have just a question on why it hasn't started.
The project has not commenced because we've had issues with getting licensed contractors and being at the bottom of the priority list. Indoor work they want to do in the winter time. The building is occupied and what they have to do, which would begin actually tomorrow is the site plan review with Mr. Beaker and the contractor, also had issues with it not knowing that the original contractor was not licensed and this work has to be completed by a licensed contractor for commercial buildings, which we have now completed. We know who this is and we know that they are licensed. And we also did complete some of the work that was on this original bid with regard to HVAC, air conditioning, and the like. So he is correct. The whole project has not commenced, but there are bits and pieces that have begun because of necessity. So this is specifically for the second floor. There is some space on that second floor that has never been utilized. So that is the primary area. And then the updates to the rest of the building is what you, I believe, have in your packet from the original, the original application for obsolete property rehab exemption certificates. So that's where we are.
Councilman Flynn?
Is the two years still realistic for completion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Bentley?
Yes, thank you. Could you describe a little bit like what the plans are?
Sure. So the second floor of the formerly known as the Nashdrums Building was not ever really fully renovated. There are two counselors on the second floor in the front portion of the building. The middle portion of the building was storage, so there is structurally nothing there. The walls have not, nothing has been done in that space since the fire that happened, I think in the seventies, maybe early seventies, when there was a dumpster that caught on fire in the back of the building. It burned that middle portion on the second floor. Nothing has been done with that yet. The, there was only one restroom on the second floor that is shared with the two tenants. And all of that needs to be rehabbed. We're trying to see with this site plan review if water can be taken over to the north side of the building. So thirty and thirty-two on the first floor were two separate spaces. But upstairs, it is one open space with different offices in there. We're also discussing whether or not that particular area, if water can be brought over to that side, then would that be able to be occupied by either short-term or long-term rental, not just office space? And that is also something that the contractor will be speaking with Mr. Beaker about tomorrow.
Councilman Bentley?
Did you mean residential?
Short-term, yes. That's what we were told originally that it could be done. Now there's some question on that. So we don't want to start any rehab until we know for sure what that space can be utilized for.
And the third floor, I understand, do you have gymnastics up there?
Yes.
How many, how many kids of our community enjoy the third floor gymnastics?
About two hundred and seven. Two hundred and seven, yeah.
And do you have any plans for the third floor?
Not in this project.
Thank you. Any further questions? I'll stop. Thank you. Move to a group council discussion? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, motion on the floor to approve the extension until October first, two thousand and twenty-six, seconded by Councilman Flynn. Any further discussion? Say the same thing I've said about all of these Oprahs. I wish there were a middle ground. I think in a case like this, similar to the Kiefer, we should collect the taxes that have not been paid to date because there is no, no progress on the project. I'm again told by city staff that this is impossible. I find that somewhat hard to believe, but apparently it's an up or down vote. I would like to extend this with the understanding essentially that we're putting it into effect right now. You know, nothing has been done. Let's give her eight years or the rest of the eight years, but collect the back taxes. Apparently this is impossible, so I'm not sure if there is a middle ground position on this. It seems like, I guess, we have an upper, up or down vote today. Councilman Bruns?
If that sort of thing is impossible, I mean, this comment's not related to this issue so much, but if it's indeed impossible, I would be really skeptical of issuing any Oprahs going forward.
Yeah, I agree that you can essentially, and I'm not at all accusing the property owner of this, but you could essentially just use it to defer taxes into the future and then say, okay, well, we'll get to it when we get to it. Yes, Mr. Mackey?
I would just like to ask City Attorney Thompson, I know he's looked at this and this specific question as of today, and just to explain what you would put in writing.
Yeah, it's pretty simple, as Mayor Proton Paladino indicated. It's a binary choice. You either can revoke the certificate because the certificate has been issued. Once you get the certificate under the statute, you're entitled to that exemption. The, it's different, each one of these little tax incentive pieces that the state created has a different statute. And for example, the industrial facilities tax statute that we dealt with before with respect to separate property owner, that has a specific provision in it that authorizes two things. One, it actually directs the local governmental unit that's involved to enter into an actual written agreement with the person who's going to receive the certificate. And it also authorizes the municipality to include a provision in that agreement that allows for the taxes or requires the taxes to be repaid that were abated in the event that the certificate is revoked. That statute specifically grants the authority to the local governmental unit to do that. The Oprah statute does not have that kind of provision in it. And because these are matters of tax law, and it's all governed by the General Property Tax Act, unless the state tells you, you have the authority to do something, you can only do it under that statute, under the provisions that are provided for in the statute. So unless and till they were to change that statute, which currently is a sunset provision of two thousand and twenty-six anyway, so unless they extend that back out again, you wouldn't be able to give any more Oprahs after that. But unless they change that to have a similar provision to the IFT statute, there's no way for you to require somebody to pay it back. As a matter of fact, you don't have written agreements in this like you do with the IFT because there is no provision that says that you have it. That's the difference between the two. So without that kind of statutory authorization, I think your remedy is to just revoke it. And the sooner you revoke it, the sooner you don't have to worry about people being abated if you won't hold their feet to the fire.
Councilman Bentley? Okay. Councilman Flynn?
Is this something then that maybe as a council or as a city, we could write a letter to Jennifer Word, such a state representative and say, hey, this is coming up in two thousand and twenty-six. If the state government is looking at extending this, we would like to see, what you said, some sort of an addition, an addendum to that act so that we have some way to get some of this status looking back. Is that a possibility?
That's a great idea, yeah. I could draft a letter in there regarding. If they are going to extend it, I would assume that would be the time to amend it so that we can enter into a separate agreement. Yeah, I, this language in the act, "The exemption certificate shall contain the factors, criteria, and objectives as determined by the resolution of the qualified local governmental unit necessary for extending the period of time, if any." So.
So that just.
That apparently relates to the total timeframe.
Right, to the total timeframe.
Of the certificate rather than to the timeframe of the completion. But we would essentially need a provision that says, well, we also want to be able to put which factors and criteria we are going to judge when it comes to the completion date. The problem is, you and I, I think, no, not the majority of the council, but half of the council didn't vote on this Oprah. So we don't really know what the agreement was at the time. So it would be nice to have an objective list of factors so that we can look at and say, did the property owner try to meet these in good faith during that time period? No, I'm not too concerned with this. We're talking about the city losing sixteen hundred dollars over this period. But if it were a massive project and we lost ten thousand dollars and there were no movement on it, I would like to have that as a guarantee. Councilman Bentley?
I, again, I agree with Councilman Flynn and what you just said. I would ask, are there any pending or requests for Oprahs on, you know, rising?
Well, if I may, that actually is one suggestion. So the provision of the statute that you referenced, Mr. Paladino, actually would allow you, what that provision basically provides, there's a maximum, if I recall, of twelve years that you can have this for, right? But you can approve a certificate for a shorter period of time. And if you do that, as part of your resolution, you're then required to put in the clear factors upon which you may, if there's a request to extend that period of time or the length of the abatement in effect, that you will use to determine whether or not you will grant such a request, okay? So one way you could do it would be to shorten the total period of time that the Oprah was for if you were, this were to come up in the future. for if you were, this were to come up in the future. And that at least gives you some leverage short of revoking the certificate, right? Because it's going to expire to make sure that the people have actually done what they were supposed to do because the expiration date is soon.
Excellent. Okay, so we can use the total length of the Oprah as leverage. You meet the completion date, which is also the Oprah certificate length. Come to us, you've completed it, now we'll give you the full twelve years. Something like that could be done in the future. Yes, Mr. Fry.
So I, I do want to add to, to the point, and I, I think that is, you know, certainly a good suggestion. In reviewing these separate from this issue, Kim, our assessor, and I have come up with several ideas and suggestions for how this could be tweaked, given some of the experience we've had recently, to look at ways that we can, you know, better ensure that the, the city is, is protected in certain regards. So I think if that's something that council wants to look at, it's governed by our, we have a policy for tax, these types of tax incentives, and I think that's something that certainly city staff could look at, possibly in conjunction with the Community Development Committee, if that's something that council wanted to do moving forward. I know we've already internally had some of those conversations.
That'd be great, yeah. Please bring that to the committee if you would and talk through that with them. Again, in this case, it's not a large amount of money at all, but we sort of have been embarrassed a bit with the I F Ts and the Oprahs to some extent. Though of course, we're only seeing the ones that don't work that come here, so that's a little bit of a, a bias, I suppose. Yes, Councilman Bentley.
Well, yeah, following my earlier question, do we have any that are requested or coming up? And how many of these, do we, do we know how many are out there right now?
So we, we don't have any that are currently pending. When the city receives these, they have sixty days to act on them, so they come to council very quickly. We don't have any that are in the pipeline or pending that we're aware of. I will talk to Kim. We can get you the numbers on the outstanding Oprahs, C R Vs, I F Ts. We can get all that data for you.
Thank you.
That'd be great to include in the minutes or maybe for the Community Development Committee for them to look over, just to sort of analyze how are all of these going as a general rule so we can get a better sense, other than just the ones that we have to vote on? Okay, I believe we still have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Uh, Roquevo, yeah. Katie Roquevo.
Yes, Council, Councilman Morrissey.
Yes.
Soha.
Yes.
Sitchell.
Yes.
Wolfram.
Yes.
Mayor Protown, Paladino.
Yes.
Councilmember Bentley.
Yes.
Bronz.
Yes.
And Flynn.
Yes.
A zero, it's approved, and that's resolution three six two four.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, that discussion was very worthwhile. I appreciate that, counsel. Thank you. Okay. One second. Oh, wow. Okay, miscellaneous reports. That's, that's a good thing to see. No proclamations. We have one appointment, Tim Green to Officers' Compensation Committee. Tim's a good guy. I don't know if he's served on any boards here before. He is an accountant, so he's the type of man we need on this board. Do I have a motion? Motion from Councilman Soha.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Brunz to appoint Timothy Green to the Officers' Compensation Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We have three remaining spots on the Officers' Compensation Committee. We are supposed to call that now. If you would, get your application in for that if you're listening. It is a very short time commitment, possibly just one or two meetings, couple hours here or there. I would really appreciate it. Thank you. We also, yes, Councilman Flynn.
Just for clarity, Officers' Compensation, which officers are included in that?
Well.
Is that us, almost, is that the Police Department?
No, just us now. It used to include the, couldn't it still technically include the clerk, the treasurer, the attorney, and the chief, since they are officers under the charter?
I believe it's for elected.
I believe it's all elected.
Oh, okay. I can't remember off the top of my head.
So it used to be for the clerk, the treasurer, when they were elected, but that all changed in the twenty teens, I believe. The clerk was made fifteen, twenty fifteen, the clerk was made appointed. So it is now just for council. Mayor, yes. Okay, and we have one alternate, I think I got a Board of Review application, but one alternate position for Board of Review and two positions for the International Property Maintenance Code, I believe. Okay? And the city has also put together, if you go to Boards and Committees under the Mayor and Council page, I think Katie put this together. Sam and Katie put this together. It's great. When you click right on the top of it, it immediately says all of the openings in the city now, rather than having to click on the nineteen different boards and commissions and then sometimes clicking another link within there to figure out whether there's an opening. So thank you for doing that. Very helpful in streamlining things. Please check that out if you're listening and volunteer for a city Board of Committee. Thank you. Okay. General public comment. Uh, Councilman Bentley, yes?
Thank you, Mark, for talking. Uh, about the, the pay thing, the, for us and the mayor, uh, are we, is it, would it be inappropriate to suggest our thoughts beforehand?
No, not at all. We have to vote to approve it, but it's like the, it's like the federal constitution. We don't get any benefit of it until after the next election.
Okay. So I guess I would just go to the committee and talk to them.
Yeah.
I mean, my thought is, I, since we don't have a mayor, uh, I think the mayor should be paid a lot more. I mean, whatever they come up with for us is fine, but I, I think the mayor should, it should almost be like a job.
I would like to see that as well, but right now the mayor is essentially just the Speaker of the council, presiding officer. If there were accompanying duties for that, I would agree, but right now, yeah, this job is what you make of it besides running the meetings.
Well, yes, but, I mean, yeah, you could argue it's, it's cart before the horse. Bring a, bring in a mayor that wants to, you know, lead us in that direction, so.
Fair enough. Okay. Now we will move on to the general public comment.
Excuse me.
The podium is open. You may speak on whatever your words so desire. Hi, Shannon.
Hi, how are you guys? I wasn't able to make it to the ninety-nine road diet. My diet died unexpectedly, so I was out of town traveling. But I did look at the, all the stuff online. I did notice that I am against the bike park, the bike path portion of it. It's a bike path that goes to nowhere, starts downtown, ends at the fairgrounds, and then you have to cross traffic to come back. If you eliminated that part of it, it looks like a really good plan, and you wouldn't have to close off a lot of the streets that you're going to have to close off to make it safe for a bike to go down. I didn't notice all the little streets that have to be closed for the bike paths, and that would save the city a lot of money. I do agree that something needs to be done. We do, however, though, have a beautiful bike path that starts at Bobby's, goes six miles or more. So you start at Bobby's, you can take that bike path all the way to Jonesville, and you can turn around and come back. So, you know, that's six miles one way, it's twelve miles round trip. And so we've already got a beautiful bike path. I don't know why we need one that starts here, ends down at the fairgrounds, and then you cross traffic to come back, which crossing traffic right there is going to be really difficult anyway. I live down in that area. So I'm against the bike path portion of it and just kind of wanted to give my word on it, and I will watch the video to see the other comments, but I noticed you guys did bring that up when I did watch the video. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Shannon. I'm very sorry to hear about your brother. I hope you're doing well.
Sixty-one, is it?
Well, brutal. Any further public comment? Anyone hanging out in the back? Okay. That will close the podium. Thank you. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor Protown. I do have just a couple comments. I did want to thank Mark Nichols for actually recording the road diet meeting because that was definitely a benefit to those of us who couldn't have, couldn't be there that night. Thank you very much. Also, just remind those small businesses in the downtown area that we do, the match on Main is still open, and that's for a matching twenty, to a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to assist a small business. That application deadline goes through Friday, March seventh, at twenty, yeah, Friday, March seventh, twenty twenty-five. And it's a pretty short timeframe in which those are reviewed and, and granted. We've had a number of applicants in the past couple of years, but we have not received any of these grants, so hopefully we can get something for local business this year. And then on the, on a good news note, we were notified that the Michigan Aeronautics Commission last week awarded Hillsdale about a hundred thousand dollar grant to, basically to purchase a new tractor and plow for the airport. Our current tractor has about eight thousand dollars on it and is probably in the shop as much as it's on, uh, used at the airport. So we, we'd received funds of about a hundred thousand dollars, it's actually a hundred and one thousand, to purchase that new tractor and blade and then do all the crack ceiling there at the airport. So they ended up receiving ninety-seven applications for a total of ten point five million that they had, and they awarded forty-four applications, and Hillsdale got two of them. So we're pleased with that, and it, it will definitely help. As we've talked about, you know, making the airport more efficient, one of the discussions was having another piece of equipment we could mow with on a larger scale because we have so much ground there, and this will help that, and, uh, MDOT will recognize that, so.
Kudos on that. Is, is there going to be, will we need to do some matching of it?
Originally, we were told that there was not. If it is, it's only up five percent, so it's five thousand dollars or less. But, yes, so we'll see how they don't that out, but at the most it will be as five percent.
Very good job. Yeah, the mowing out there is crazy, multiple days a week. Any questions for the manager? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Council comment? Have we had any further discussion about what we should do for the road diet, whether we want to do a committee meeting, whether we want to have a work session, a special council meeting to take public input? Has city staff discussed this at all?
If I remember correctly, sir, at the road diet meeting, they said that that application for the grant needed to be turned in, I think Alan said, by the end of February, so we would have to do something here fairly soon.
Yes.
And I do know that Alan was inquiring what it would cost to do the review for the roundabouts that was brought up at, at the meeting, so that we were looking at the, the small funding amount that was needed for that, and so that's probably part of this time process.
Councilman Sitchell, thank you.
I would like to recommend that if we have a work session, we include member from Tifa as well.
Yes, yeah, good idea. If I can get in touch with Andrew about that, I'm sure he'd be happy to participate. Councilman Bentley?
Yeah, Mr. Beaker said something about he was going back to the drawing board, so, but it was also the grant wasn't necessarily, like, the grant could happen without his, anybody.
We don't have to have finalized plans, right? We just have to have a prospectus.
But does anybody know how Mr. Beaker's doing with his going back to the drawing board, or if, if he is, or how long it might take?
I don't know the exact time that he will take, but I know he has, he's working on that currently, yes. I can report on that at the next meeting.
Okay, so we're, if, the grant, is that approval going to be on the February seventeenth agenda?
It would need to be, to be submitted, yes. So we should have information for the council and the board.
Okay.
Now, again, keep in mind, it's not the, the final, it's whether or not we want to participate in a grant and the general concept of it.
Okay. Yeah, the thing that slightly worries me there is once we've approved a grant, it's sort of, it has its own momentum of its own, and I want to make sure our citizens have a, you know, their chance to have their say. So maybe February seventeenth is just the time to, to come out to discuss that then. Okay. Councilman Flynn?
Well, I do know that Alan mentioned that, um, once, if, if we get approved for the grant, then there might be an opportunity to sit down, and I think that was one of the things he was checking in his timeline was if we are approved for the grant, do we have to do the bike lanes? Do we have to do this? Do we have to do that? Or can we get approved for the, the, the grant and then kind of massage it to the way we want it? So I know, I know he's been working on that.
Yes, thank you. Councilman Bentley?
I'm sorry, uh, so we think it's the seventeenth, and we think he will have something, and we think we're going to do our final, final, yes, go elbow on, on, on this, because I don't think we're ready.
We will authorize the council, we will authorize the city staff to apply for the grant.
Oh, so there's further exits before then?
And I assume we will probably apply with the plan that we saw at the meeting in January? Is that right?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Yeah, no, this is tough then, because.
Yes, please, thank you.
So there's a couple of things that we're waiting for yet. MDOT is getting back still on the terms of what we can and can't put in for, still with the tap grant, which we've been having back and forth with them just today. Also, we have a third party doing the design preliminary for the roundabouts that was asked for as well. We've talked with MDOT today, with our consultants. I would talk with Alan probably next day or two, and we should have a, a good answer to put onto council for the next week, so. So it'll be a couple more days, and we'll do get some fine, some, some fine details coming.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Could you please copy council on any communications about what is required, what, what type of project we will have to do to qualify for the grant as soon as you know, so that we don't get it next Thursday?
Absolutely. So it's kind of a slower process because we're going through multiple agencies on to see what we can, can't do. So I do apologize for that, but we are real close to making something to present.
Thank you. Councilman Brunz.
This isn't for Jason, for those who attended the meeting. I was there, but I, I left early. Was there a, like, a public desire for roundabouts that was extensive in some way? So.
I think it was one, oh, yes, please.
I'm sorry.
Um, so, Grant Baker, who owns Gelsers, um, near the end of the meeting, brought up the possibility of a roundabout, and I guess at some earlier time, when we moved the main highway from this side of City Hall to that side, there was talk back then about the possibility of a roundabout, but I do believe MDOT at that time said no. So Grant just approached the subject about, you know, had we thought about now doing a roundabout? So there wasn't a whole lot of discussion. He just kind of brought that up and, and MDOT said that was something they could look at.
Yes, so years ago, we looked into that and had some models brought up with the kind of roundabouts that were aware at that time. We weren't eligible for it. Now with the micros and stuff, although we have, then we could look back at that model, and that's what we're looking at, see if it's even feasible to do. There is a lot of good stuff, and there are a lot more grants out there for roundabouts as well, mission grants and so forth like that.
Yeah, Councilman Bentley?
Are you just talking about this intersection?
Yes, so we're looking at two. One for the, to, to connect the four corners over here, and then one right here at City Hall.
Which four corners?
The four corners here, just by North, Hall, put Hall back into a two-way the way it should be, and then so on over here by the post office as well.
So I want to echo your concerns, like, uh, before we do this, like, before we vote, I, I think we should. I, I think we should at least discuss having a meeting for the people, because the road meeting, if you want that up here, we can and should do that, because the people should be heard on this.
Absolutely.
Yeah, this is the biggest thing we've done to the city in, or would do to the city in years. And affects not only the business owners, but everyone who travels through the city. Okay, yes, Councilman Flynn?
And I will speak for those at St. Peter's Episcopal Church, and to the folks at St. Anthony's as well. Uh, the folks at St. Peter's have posted some very lovely handmade signs outside the church the last couple of Sundays, saying, "Don't shut off our street," because they do use Cook Street, um, a lot for parking. It's a, I don't want to call it a church war, but their, their service and the second service for St. Anthony's happens at about the same time, and there are many more people that attend St. Anthony's, and so we Catholics tend to take up the majority of the parking. So the St. Peter's people park down Cook Street. And I brought this up at the road diet meeting, that if you shut that off, then you have to have people come up the hill. And if you don't put in a cul-de-sac type situation, there's no way to turn around. There's only one drive in that section that belongs to the St. Anthony's. It's a private drive. The rest of us wouldn't like people turning around constantly in our driveways, neither would they. So I know the churches would like to see some sort of, if we could keep that open for, if anything, for, um, parking for services on weekends and stuff.
If I may on that as well?
Yes.
Councilman Flynn, so we have, we thought about that as well, um, tried to mediate that. We thought about putting a private drive off of Maiden Street, and then essentially have a, an ingress, ingress through a driveway through there. So that may be one thing we're trying to work in this drawing as well.
Cool, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Councilman Bentley?
So what are we going to run the meeting?
Would this be public services or community development?
Uh, but, but all.
Hold for here. I'm wondering if we should put this on the agenda for a committee meeting and tell citizens if you have, you know, especially if you have a concrete proposal to come out and bring that before the February seventeenth meeting?
And/or we could, I think, uh, what is it, seventeenth and then the twenty-fourth? Like, we could make the seventeenth, like, the citywide traffic meeting dedicated to that, and then do a regular meeting the following week. I don't know.
Yeah, I think we, uh, I'm not sure that we need a separate meeting, but what does council think?
Is it possible to hold a, like, a public hearing, like, if there were other things ahead of the regular meeting or as part of the regular meeting?
You know, we could add, I'm pretty sure we're allowed to add a separate, separate public comment here, period, for one item.
Well, the, the, the original meeting went two hours, and I think this would easily go two hours also, so.
Well, we're making up for it here. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, thank you all. Uh, you have some more?
Once we have something, we will get it out to the council immediately.
Great.
So if, if it's a couple of days sometime later this week, um, hopefully we'll have something then to make it, uh, a decision on how to proceed.
Okay, great, thank you.
But we won't, may be able to make decisions for two more weeks, whatever, what is here. So should I change my suggestion to a motion? The suggestion being dedicating the seventeenth to the citywide traffic thing. And that's, that's it.
But we have to vote on the grant at that. You're, so you could possibly suggest a separate special meeting on the twenty-fourth or so to vote simply on the grant after we have some time to digest it? Is that which, after you hear public comment?
Yes, yes, but that's not good.
Okay.
Either way, yeah.
Okay.
But before, but before you vote, I want to hear from the public.
Okay, yeah, Jason?
Yes, but if we may, um, go back with Alan, give us about a week, we can put this on the next agenda to talk about and put the, uh, um, public for the week after that maybe, or the same week after we present it to council.
I think his concern, though, is that we have to vote on the grant before the city has time to, is that not right? We have to apply for the grant next meeting?
I guess just to add, because Jason and I have spoken to Alan about this, I think there's a little bit of flexibility, according to the state, with when we actually have to get it in. I don't know that we need to make a decision by the end of February. I think we were informed that there is still some time.
Okay.
So I think, like, Jason's suggestion is, once Alan and Jason have a chance to get something finalized, it could be presented to council at the next meeting. Then after that, we could, you know, solicit an additional round of public feedback. And I believe that was Alan's intent. It was mentioned at the meeting that after incorporating that feedback, it would be presented again a second time, and then so there would still be time for council to go ahead and act on that.
Okay.
So I don't think the timeline is as compressed as, as...
Okay, very good. Let's not vote to, uh, even apply for it then on the seventeenth. We don't want any of our citizens to think we're blindsiding them with this. Let's just present the proposal then, uh, and let it, let it marinate for as long as possible. Any other comments? Yes, Councilman Flynn?
Just a quick reminder, though, that, and to Mr. Bentley too, um, just a reminder that if we apply for the grant, that doesn't mean we're going to get the grant. If we apply for the grant and are denied, it's out the window. We're not going to do anything. So this is just strictly more of a, okay, get us into the game type thing, and then wait and see. And Jason, do we happen to know if, how long before they announce who gets the grants? I mean, will it be a week, a month, six months?
It'll be before fall, because MDOT's supposed to get their project ready for twenty twenty-seven regardless of what we do, because they're still going to come in and do a full mill reveal for all four lanes regardless. So they're going to be held up until we get our projects done, so I would assume three months, four months before we get on that. So it should go very quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bentley?
Uh, but as, uh, Councilman Stichel just reminded me, that we're mostly talking about drawing lines on a road, so, and Mr. Baker didn't clarify it for me at the meeting. I don't know what all the grant monies are for.
I think that is what Jason said. He will know in a day or two, and he's going to get that. What are the qualifications for the grant? What money are we getting, and what do we have to do to get that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So a lot of the grant money is not just striping, it's, uh, redoing the parking lot over here.
Okay.
I can take out Union Street, can make that parking lot bigger, um, closing off Cook Street, closing off Wilder Street, making that a green belt now. Some park more, adding more parking on the highway itself. There's a lot more to it than that. But I will definitely, when I get a couple more days, I will send it to you guys direct.
I don't know that there's a whole lot of opposition to the stuff east of Carlton.
No, the improvements are fine. Why would MDOT be interested in anything to do with Union Street?
So that's all part, it could be all part of that grant because it's part of the pedestrian part of it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, that sounds better. Thank you. Any further discussion? All set?
Motion to adjourn?
Say.
Motion to adjourn from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Flynn. The meeting is adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The meeting is adjourned.